All right. We call a meeting in order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Letter newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Can I have roll call, please?
Mr. Pavulovich?
Here.
Mr. Mandela?
Here.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on the agenda. Seeing none, I close that part of the meeting. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, we're a little short today, but there's a lot on the agenda, so we're gonna get it all done. Does anybody have any committee reports?
I have a facilities report.
Fantastic.
I attended the meeting on last Monday regarding the construction going on in all three facilities. We seem to be on target, we're a little bit behind schedule on certain things, but things are moving along. The field is being, the drainage system is being put in place, the high school, we're moving along, the auditorium, air conditioning ducts are already in place, things are moving okay, I guess. Right now, we are looking at, if I'm not mistaken, on time completion, Mr. Featherson, so no pressure or anything.
As of this moment?
As of this moment, so.
Even the field, or the field we're slightly going?
We're gonna remain optimistic.
I have to say that they're pushing very hard from what I saw in the amount of people that are there, so hopefully it'll all work out in the long run.
Awesome.
Great. Any other presentations or updates? All right. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have a motion for B1?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, B1 is a motion to accept the resignation of Joseph Sacala from the Cedar Grove Board of Education, effective immediately. I'm gonna read Mr. Sacala's letter of resignation. Dear Mr. Featherman, as you are aware, the Cedar Grove Township Council voted this evening to appoint me to the vacancy that was created by a recent resignation from the governing body. As such, I ask that you please accept this letter as formal notice that I am resigning my position as a member of the Cedar Grove Board of Education, effective immediately. Please know that the decision to accept the council position was not an easy one for me, as I truly enjoyed and valued my six years on the Cedar Grove Board of Education. The experience was educational for me, and I learned more than I ever thought I would. I especially enjoyed working with the administration, faculty, and staff in our never-ending effort to better our school district. I'm proud of the things that we have accomplished and the goals that we have set to make our district great. I have valued the time spent with my fellow board members, our endless hours of discussion and debate, and our team approach to overcoming every obstacle and working together for the benefit of the students and families of Cedar Grove. It is this interaction that I will miss most. Also, I will not soon forget the endless hours of discussion that we shared, working together as superintendent and board president. I appreciate all of the hard work that you do and the dedication that you have to the district. As you know, the job of superintendent is not an easy one. However, you have met every challenge along the way in your effort to lead the Cedar Grove School District to new heights, and for that, I am both appreciative and confident that I leave the Cedar Grove Board of Education in good hands. Finally, I want to ensure you that although I no longer sit in the Board of Education, or on the Board of Education, I will continue to support the Board in any way possible. That said, I would be remiss if I didn't thank you and my fellow board members for the support that you've given me over the last six years. I look forward to working with you and the Board in the future, as I am certain that our paths will cross again. Very truly yours, Joseph Sacala. Any questions?
No, I just have a comment. You know, Joe was an unbelievable asset to the Board and the community, as everyone knows. You know, we accomplished a lot while he was, his tenure here on the Board. He was very dedicated, he was, he was very knowledgeable in areas where we needed him many times, and he just was very, and he still is very pro-community, pro-the-kids, and that's where his heart always was, and he's surely gonna be missed from the Board, and I wish him, you know, I'm happy for him, I think that's a path that he, you know, there was a part of him that always had that in him to be on the town council, and, you know, I wish him all the best, and I think for us, it's a good thing to have, you know, someone on our side. It's been a long time. We have, we've had always one or two, but now it looks like we're starting to get more support on the town council, and we need that on our side, so it's gonna be good to have a friend, another friend on the Board, on the town council.
Yep, and I just wanna say, or take a moment to say that I'm gonna miss Joe. For the last five years, I've worked with him on the Board, and he's been a great asset to the district. He's always done what was best, and he never had any kind of agenda, he just did what was best for the district, which I think is so important. We're in a far better place as a result of Mr. Sacala's efforts over the last six years, and I know I'm a better Board member for having worked with him. While we're missing him, I am very glad that Cedar Grove gets to keep a great leader with Joe on the town council, and I look forward to working with him in his new capacity.
Boy, you did a formal one.
I did, yeah. You know, it works out a little bit better that way, you get all your thoughts out, you know, it's, you know. Are you gonna say anything, or you're just gonna remain quiet?
Honestly, I've been here six months, and Joe's been a great inspiration, and I learned a lot from him in six months. I mean, it's a short time, but I thank you for everything that you passed on, and hopefully I'll get more guidance from him in the future, if I didn't get enough from you two.
We're full of guidance. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. So, do I say, can I have a motion, or do I just say, I know we went over this. Okay. Can I have a motion for B2, please?
So moved.
I hereby nominate this.
No, you have to do a second first.
Second. Apologize. I was a little confused on that one.
It's gonna be a fun time. Can I, all right. B2 is, can I have a nomination for the Office of Board President, please?
I'm working with two newbies here, sorry. I have a new Board member and a new president.
It's not official till you approve B2, and I have to be nominated, okay?
I nominate Chrissy Die for Board President.
I hereby second.
Phew. All right. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. Thank you to my fellow board members.
You're welcome.
I promised to try to do a great job. It'll be fun. All right, can I have a motion for B3?
So moved.
Second.
And B3 is, can I have a nomination, please, for the Office of Board Vice President?
I hereby nominate Mr. Frank Mandela.
And I second that.
Can I decline nomination?
Any questions?
No.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. Do we get official now with the little placards? Should we do that now?
No.
I don't know what's the.
Oh, we can, it's not too. Oh, okay, we'll stay tuned for that. I know, and that's why I was thinking, but, that's okay.
By the way, that's on backboard, it's gotta fit the budgets first, so we'll think about that.
All right. Moving on. Okay, can I have a motion for, under minutes, B4, please?
So moved.
Second.
And B4 is a motion to approve the public executive minutes of June 21st and June 29th, 2016. Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. Can I have a motion for B5 through B7?
So moved.
Second.
B5 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of June 2016. B6 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code, and further pursuant to the code, no major account or fund has been over expended in violation of the code. B7 is a motion to pay the following list of bills for July 19th, 2016. Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. Under Business, can I have a motion for, I think we're gonna break this up a little bit, 'cause there's a lot. You know what, I'm just gonna do a motion for B8.
So moved.
'Cause it's kinda.
You're not reading all of that.
No, but I'm gonna read to there. I was advised that the public should hear up to there, so.
We're gonna get better at this.
We are, just, you know.
Absolutely. We're fine.
Did somebody second cut?
Yeah, we did.
All right. B8, whereas the Board of Education and the borough of Cedar Grove, hereafter referred to as the Board, and the Cedar Grove Custodial Association, hereafter referred to as the Association, are parties to a collective negotiations agreement that is effective for the period beginning July 1st, 2012, and ending June 30th, 2015, and whereas the Board recognizes the Association as the sole bargaining representative for the custodial staff members employed by the Board, and whereas Article 5 of the agreement provides that formal workday for district custodians shall be one shift, as listed, whereas a custodian who also wishes to start his shift later has requested to start at one and a half hours later, as listed, on various days during the week, whereas said custodian has agreed to begin his workday one and a half hours later than his required start time, and whereas the Board wishes to accommodate said custodian on a case-by-case basis depending upon the needs of the district. Now therefore, based on the foregoing premise and mutual promises as covenants contained herein, the parties hereby agree to what's listed below. Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. Can I have a motions for B9 through B14?
So moved.
Second.
B9 is a motion to amend motion number B21 from the May 24th meeting approving Stephen David Entertainment, Inc. to use a memorial middle school to film the second season of Shadow of a Doubt. B10 is a motion to retroactively approve Lilith Corporation to remove and dispose of 100 square feet of cinder block wall and any uncovered pipe insulation from the common chase located within Phase 1 at South End Elementary School, and the bathrooms at a cost not to exceed $7,200. B11 is a motion to retroactively approve Lilith Corporation to remove and dispose of non-friable exterior caulk associated with 22 classroom unit ventilators in the South End Elementary School at a cost not to exceed $7,700. B12 is a motion to retroactively approve Lilith Corporation to remove and dispose of 130 square feet of cinder block wall and any uncovered pipe insulation from common chase located within Phase 1 of North End Elementary School's bathrooms at a cost not to exceed $6,900. B13 is a motion to retroactively approve Lilith Corporation to remove and dispose of non-friable exterior caulk associated with 20 classroom unit ventilators in the North End Elementary School at a cost not to exceed $7,000. And B14 is a motion to revise motion B36 from the June 21st meeting to read as follows, motion to approve and authorize the Board Secretary to redeposit funds into the appropriate accounts at Investors Savings Banks as listed below. Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. Can I have a motions for B15 through B21?
So moved.
Second.
B15 is a motion to retroactively approve BRS relocation services to relocate wood and metal surplus in the loading dock area at Cedar Grove High School and return same to new shelving at a cost not to exceed $2,628. B16 is a motion to retroactively approve BRS relocation services to pack and relocate trophies and trophy displays from the Cedar Grove High School's school main office hallway at a cost not to exceed $2,294. B17 is a motion to retroactively approve relocation strategies to oversee the relocation of wood and metal surplus in the loading dock area at Cedar Grove High School and return same to new shelving at a cost not to exceed $650. B18 is a motion to retroactively approve relocation strategies to oversee the packing and relocation of trophies and trophy displays from the Cedar Grove High School's main office hallway at a cost not to exceed $650. B19 is a motion to retroactively approve Lilith Corporation to remove and abate 50 linear feet of asbestos material from the South End Elementary School heating system. B20 is a motion to retroactively approve Lilith Corporation to remove and abate 48 linear feet of asbestos material from the North End Elementary School heating system. And B21 is a motion to retroactively approve Lilith Corporation to remove and abate 25 linear feet of asbestos material from the Cedar Grove High School heating system. Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. There's an awful lot under the Bs. Can I have a motion for B22 through B28?
So moved.
Second.
B22 is a motion to approve Lilith Corporation to perform the following services as listed below. B23 is a motion to approve Lilith Corporation to approve the removal of 20 louvers and flashing at North End School at a cost not to exceed $2,600. B24 is a motion to approve Lilith Corporation to approve the removal of 22 louvers and flashing at South End School at a cost not to exceed $2,800. B25 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contract with the parents of the student listed below in the amount listed therein for the 2016-2017 school year. B26 is a motion to approve ML Ink's change order number 5 in the amount of $25,807.48 for the items listed therein. B27 is a motion to approve Brahma Construction's change order number 2 in the amount of $22,041.84 for the items listed therein. And B28 is a motion to approve Brahma Construction Corp.'s change order number 3 in the amount of $37,797.94 for the items listed therein. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. Can I have a motion for, to approve B29 through B35?
So moved.
Second.
B29 is a motion to approve Brahma Construction Corp.'s payment application number 2 in the amount of $404,444.74 for payment. B30 is a motion to approve the annual contract with School Dude, Inc. to provide FS Direct Services for the school year 2016-2017 at a cost not to exceed $3,400. B31 is a motion to approve the submission of the 2017 No Child Left Behind Grant in the amounts listed below. B32 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contract with the parents of the students listed therein at amount listed therein as well for the 2016-2017 school year. B33 is a motion to approve ML Ink's payment application number 5 in the amount of $1,559,398.98 for work completed at Cedar Grove High School. B34 is a motion to approve Standard and Poor's Financial Services, Inc. to provide analytical services in connection with the bond sale scheduled to take place on July 27th, 2016. And B35 is a motion to approve submission of the 2017 IDEA grant for the following amounts listed therein. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. And there were two new resolutions that were added recently, so can I please have a motion for B36 and B37?
So moved.
Second.
B36 is a motion to appoint Mr. Mark Resnick, interim business administrator, beginning August 8th, 2016 through November 1st, 2016, at a rate of $500 a day. And B37, sorry, is a motion to appoint Mr. Ernest Turner of Summit Management Solutions as a business, I'm sorry.
You said 500, it's 550.
Oh, 550, sorry, there is a zero there. $550 a day, I apologize. That'd be a heck of a deal, wouldn't it? And B37 is a motion to appoint Mr. Ernst Turner of Summit Management Solutions, LLC, as the business office consultant at a rate of $100 an hour. Any questions?
No, just to further clarify, for the community, I don't know if you have this, that's why I'm just, this was an executive session. We need, as you know, Ms. Tavonier is down to her last couple of weeks with the district, so we just hired an interim BA, 'cause we need a BA, so we hire an interim, and it's per diem, per day. So that's what this, we just voted on that you don't have, is we just met with the interim, and we approved him, you know, during executive session. So we're hoping, we're having interviews next week for a BA, so we're hoping that this is a sure period of time. Usually, when an administrative leaves, it's usually a 60-day notice, whoever we hire, so we anticipate this interim to be like a 60, most 90-day interim, so that's what this was.
And we've already worked with one of them before, in the past, so.
Yeah, he was our interim before we hired Ms. Tavonier, he was our interim before, the second gentleman. But now they're both retired, and they don't work, no one works full-time anymore, so, but they are in the same place together, they've worked together, so that's why, so we're not double paying when one day, one gets paid, the other day the other gets paid, so that's what that was, just for clarification.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under Personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through, there's a lot, there are two, S1 through S11.
You're just doing it by page.
I am, I think it's easier, and it's easier for the public to follow.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Fantastic. S1 is a motion to verify accomplishment of one quantitative merit goal in accordance with the amendments to the code and 3.1 set forth in the Superintendent Michael Featherman's Merit Action Plan for the 2015-2016 school year, and, as listed below, I think that, right, is good enough, congratulations. S2 is a motion to approve the contract of Michael Featherman, Superintendent of Schools, at the annual salary listed below for the 2016-2017 school year, as approved by the County Executive Superintendent of Schools. Again, congratulations. S3, and nobody get their hopes up, is a motion to approve the contract of Renee Tavonier, School Business Administrator/Board Secretary, at the annual salary listed below for the 2016-2017 school year, but let me make it clear that the school year started on July 1st, and so Renee has to have a working contract through her last day, which is August 5th. So we're approving the contract for the school year, but obviously she's still leaving on August 5th, unfortunately. S4 is a motion to approve the letter of resignation from Nicholas Molina, high school math teacher. S5 is a motion to approve Thomas Muggan, high school math teacher, at the step listed therein, at the rate listed therein, effective September 9th, 2016. S6 is a motion to rescind Andrea Watson as JV girls tennis coach. S7 is a motion to approve Andrea Watson as varsity girls tennis coach. S8 is a motion to approve Olivia Miller, JV girls tennis coach. S9 is a motion to approve the letter of resignation from Nicholas Murphy, high school chemistry teacher. S10 is a motion to approve Lori Robinson, high school, school elementary, or chemistry teacher, sorry, at a rate listed therein. And S11 is a motion to approve Colleen Bolger, head of cross-country coach, at the rate listed therein. Any questions?
No, again, just on S1, I'd just like to thank Mr. Featherman. In that area, this merit goal was based on CUSAC, which I'm sure maybe, starting the beginning of the year, you might be planning on doing a presentation, I didn't know if you were.
Like a cool slideshow type of thing?
To bring us, you know, as, I don't know if many of you knew, we were sort of, we did not pass CUSAC last year, and we set out very aggressive initiative to pass CUSAC within the year, and that was part of Mr. Featherman's goal, and we, I mean, it was awesome. We saw it as Board members, our ratings are very high, and I just wanna thank Mr. Featherman and administration to make that happen in a very quick manner, because a lot of the areas was, were out of Mr. Featherman's control, 'cause he took over halfway through on a lot of the things, so, since our last rating, so I just want that area, even though Ms. Die didn't read the whole thing, I just wanted the community to know that it's, it's, it's an important miracle that Mr. Featherman achieved, so, thank you.
And we're actually approving it after the fact, because we didn't have the results of CUSAC until recently. We had approved the other ones at prior meeting.
Correct.
So that's why this is the last one. Any other comments, questions? Fantastic.
I don't wanna ruin it.
What'd you say?
I don't wanna ruin it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. Can I have a motion for S12 through S25, please?
So moved.
Second.
S12 is a motion to approve the resignation of Michael Carlucci, high school math teacher. S13 is a motion to rescind Michael Musab, assistant girls soccer coach, effective July 19th, and to approve him as the head girls soccer coach, effective July 20th. S14 is a motion to approve Diane Palomieri, South End School, grade 3 teacher, at the rate listed therein. S15 is a motion to approve David Kendia, Memorial Middle School, social studies teacher, at the rate listed therein. S16 is a motion to approve Michael Di Chiara, okay, North End School, physical education teacher, the rate listed therein. S17 is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring procedure. S18 is a motion to accept the resignation from Daniel Casanova, Cedar Grove High School head football coach, retroactively effective July 8th, 2016. S19 is a motion to approve Ryan Corbussero, varsity assistant football coach, at the rate listed therein. S20 is a motion to approve Michael Risamini, varsity assistant coach, assistant football coach, at the rate listed therein. S21 is a motion to approve Joe Cardinelli, high school 10th grade advisor, at the rate set therein. S22 is a motion to approve Michael Cusimano, high school custodian, at the rate listed therein. S23 is a motion to rescind the lunch duty stipend from Di Misha, North End School, for the 2016-2017 school year. S24 is a motion to approve the lunch study, lunch duty split stipend for A Valley and M Di Chiara, North End School, effective 2016-2017 school year. And S25 is a motion to retroactively employ and set the salary for the non-bargaining staff member, effective July 1st, 2016, for the 2016-2017 school year, as listed therein. Any questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. Can I have a motion for S26 through S28?
So moved.
Second.
S26 is a motion to approve the summer work for the following guidance counselors at the per diem rate of pay, as listed therein. S27 is a motion to reimburse the following summer help custodians for fingerprinting and expenses, as listed below. And S28 is a motion to retroactively approve Sean Sweeney to provide summer instruction to the student listed therein at the rate set thereforth. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dogg.
Yes. And we're gonna remove S29 from tonight's agenda and approve it at a later meeting. So, can I have a motion to approve S30 through S34?
So moved.
Second.
S30 is a motion to approve the revised high school final exam dates for the 2016-2017 school district calendar. S31 is a motion to approve the following lunch aids for the 2016-2017 school year. S-31 is a motion to approve the following lunch aids for the 2016-2017 school year, as listed below. S-32 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events for the following instructors listed below. S-33 is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation, as listed below. And S-34 is a motion to approve the New Jersey Department of Education District Mentoring Plan and submission to the County Office of Said Mentoring Plan Statement of Assurance for the 2016-2017 school year. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under curriculum, can I have a motion for S-35 through S-36?
So moved.
Second.
S-35 is a motion to retroactively approve the following employees for revised and realigned curricula for the 2015-2016 school year at the rate listed therein. S-36 is a motion to retroactively approve the following employees for the rewritten curricula for the 2015-2016 school year, at the curriculum rate listed therein, for maximum of 20 hours. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Finally, I can stop talking. Mr. Featherman, do you have any policy updates?
I do. I will be brief, so you say. The New Jersey Department of Education updated several New Jersey Administrative Code chapters in February, March, and April of 2016 that are cited in policy and reg noted on our comprehensive equity plan needs assessment, which needs to be submitted every three years. Several county offices of education in the state, Essex included, are requiring school districts to update these policies and regulations to incorporate these recent revisions before September 1. The following policy and/or regulation guides that were noted on the needs assessment have been updated to incorporate the new Administrative Code revisions. As you will see, the revisions are very minor, I will read them to you. But first, as we know, policy revisions require a first reading for approval and a second reading for adoption, as is typically the case. However, school districts located in counties that are requiring these updates before September 1 can have the Board adopt these policies and regs with one reading due to time constraints or limited Board meetings during the summer. This option would require a motion, as we included here tonight. Let's start with adopting these updates, shall we? Policy 1140, affirmative action program, this is a revision. The only revision required in this policy guide is the inclusion of, and I quote, "gender, identity, or expression," end quote, "in the protected class of individuals." The Administrative Code was revised to be consistent with New Jersey's law against discrimination. Policy 1523, entitled Comprehensive Equity Plan, this is a revision. The only revision required in this policy guide is an additional paragraph that defines the comprehensive equity plan as the following: An assessment of the school district's needs for achieving equity in educational programming, for instance, staffing practices, quality of program data, student assessment, behavioral data disaggregated by gender, race, ethnicity, limited English proficiency, et cetera. Policy 1530, entitled Equal Employment Opportunities. And Regulation 1530, the only revision required in this policy guide is the inclusion of, and I quote, "gender, identity, or expression," once again, "in the protected class of individuals." Policy 1550, entitled Affirmative Action Program for Employment and Contract Practices. The only revision required in this policy guide is the inclusion of, and I quote again, "gender, equity, or expression," close quote, "in the protected class of individuals." I think you see a pattern here. Policy 2200, curriculum content, no revisions are required in this policy guide due to the updated Administrative Code chapter, but references to other policies have been updated within the policy guide. Moving on to Policy 2260, entitled Affirmative Action Program for School and Classroom Practices. One of the revisions required in this policy guide is the inclusion of, again, quote, "gender, identity, or expression," in the protected class of individuals. Policy 2411, entitled Guidance Counseling. One of the revisions required in this policy guide is the inclusion of, and I quote, "gender, gender identity, or expression," close quote, "in the protected class of individuals." Policy 2423, entitled Bilingual and ESL Education. New Jersey Administrative Code 6A:15 was approved on March 21st, requiring significant revisions in policy and regulation. The new code revisions changed the reference from student of limited English proficiency, or LEP, to English Language Learners, or ELL. In general, the new code chapter provides some additional clarification to a school district in meeting the requirements of providing a bilingual and English as a second language and an English-language services program for ELLs. Policy 2610, no revisions are required in this policy guide due to the updated chapter, but a deleted code citation has been removed from the bottom of the policy guide. Three more. Policy 2622, entitled Student Assessment. The only revision there is due to the updated chapter, revision citation in Administrative Code on page 2. Policy 5750, entitled Equal Educational Opportunity. One of the revisions required in this policy guide is the inclusion of, again, quote, "gender, gender identity, or expression," in the protected class of individuals. And lastly, Policy 5755, entitled Equity in Educational Programs and Services. One of the revisions required in this policy guide is the inclusion of, again, quote, "gender, gender identity, or expression," in the protected class of individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for S-37?
So moved.
And S-37 is a motion to suspend the rules of Bylaw 0130 and adopt the following list of policies and regulations on first reading for the submission of documentation supporting the 2016-2019 Comprehensive Equity Plan to the Department of Education. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S-38? S-38?
So moved.
Second.
S-38 is a motion to approve the following contracts for the 2016-2017 school year for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services, as listed below, at the rate set forth therein. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on or off the agenda. All right. Go right ahead. I'm not sure either. Here, hold on one second, we'll figure it all out. Over here? Okay. Should I? Okay, it's fine. Yeah, it picks it up.
Suzanne, I don't need a chair, if you don't, it's okay. Suzanne Trupia, 8 Dalewood Road. I just have a few positive comments about the Department of Special Education. I know that right now you are undergoing, or they're undergoing, an audit, and oftentimes all that the board members kind of hear are negative comments, so, as you know, I founded the Realize Group, which is a group of parents back in 2011, and overall, generally speaking, people are very happy with the services they're receiving in Cedar Grove. The respect that we have for Mr. Kinney, his responsiveness, his genuine concern for the families and the programs that he provides for us are all extremely positive. And Mr. Featherman came to our last PAC Realize meeting, which he does at the end of every school year, and I thank you for coming, and oftentimes, he hears, you know, complaints. But hopefully, you understood also at that meeting that the majority of people here are very happy with the services they're receiving and very grateful to Mr. Kinney for kind of spearheading the department and leading us in such a positive way. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your good things.
Yes, always.
Anyone else wish to speak? I feel that motion in the meeting. Announcement, the next meeting will be August 23rd, here, 7:00 PM executive, 8:00 PM regular. The meeting after that will be September, oh, okay, the meeting after that will be September 6th, 2016, location to be determined, we're going to take it on the road somewhere, depending on where there's space, 7:00 PM executive, 8:00 PM regular meeting, and we're going to add a July 27th, 2016, meeting for next week, here, at 9:00?
7:00?
7:00.
7:00. Close session.
Close session, and then 9:00 PM public session. All right. Lots of meetings going on. All right. Any other comments from my fellow board members? The ones that remain?
You didn't have enough today?
What'd you say?
You didn't have enough.
Oh, this was fun, this is going to be a great time, so. I'll get the hang of it, just, you know, little steps.
She looks a little concerned.
He's so excited to be VP, he really is. It's a little change, you know, president now VP, right? See, look, we're going to be great together. All right. Motion to be done.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Renee.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Wait, before we...
Oh, geez.
Oh, no, there is one more meeting, sorry. I was going to say goodbye to Renee, but I forgot we have July 27th. Aye.
Okay, and Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Meetings ended. Good night, everybody.
Good night.